Folks in Facebook land. Now, first, you know, let me also, before we get going, let me just thank all the candidates for giving me this opportunity. I appreciate you guys allowing me, the person, to get these ideas across to the voters. And of course, thank you, everyone that's here in attendance. Thank you for everyone watching online. So, before we get started, we're actually going to hear a few words from the student body president at Stevens, and that's Paulina Gorgouchis.
My name is Paulina Gorgouchis. I'm a senior chemical biology major from Washington, New Jersey, and as you heard, I'm the student government president. As the president of the SGI, it is my absolute honor to welcome you on behalf of Stevens students, faculty, and administration to our beautiful University Center complex for the council candidate forum. I and fellow SGI leadership believe strongly in civic engagement and service. You may know that multiple of our student organizations have volunteer and service requirements. We volunteer to clean parks, tutor younger kids, help out at soup kitchens, set up at various city events, and I actually just finished a practice as a volunteer coach for Hoboken recreational field hockey league. I would like to highlight a new student organization called Blueprint that looks for Hoboken nonprofit organizations to work to develop an app for. In addition, I wanted to also highlight two initiatives that the SGI is launching. One is the Kindness Initiative, which is a week-long campaign prior to Thanksgiving to promote kindness and positivity. Some of the activities include leaving rubber ducks on campus in proper Stevens fashion with motivational quotes, gratitude letter writing to faculty, staff, alumni, and donors, snack donations to night classes, a service event, and a student-faculty panel on the student experience. And the second initiative is a composting pilot program where we will be adding a composting toter bin on campus and working with a select group of students to make our campus even more sustainable. Just to close, Stevens is a proud part of the Hoboken community. We are based in the Sixth Ward, but our students and alumni live all over the city. At last count, there were more than 500 alumni living in Hoboken, and that number continues to grow yearly. We are encouraging the Stevens community to be actively engaged in Hoboken, and we look forward to being a resource to Hoboken as well. Good luck to all of the candidates this evening, and thank you very much. And I'll give it back to John Highness. That's Hoboken City Mayor.
Thank you, Paulina. That was very, very quality remarks, if you ask me. And, you know, I also want to point out, we got some voter registration in the back, so, I mean, I recognize almost everyone here, so I imagine a lot of you are registered, but if you're not, then we have those here as well. Always nice to see young people getting involved, and everyone complains that nobody votes. So, without further ado, we're going to let the candidates introduce themselves, and for this time, we're just going to start at the left and work our way across. So, we'll start with Leo, and we'll end with Councilman Russo. And they're just going to introduce themselves to you and to the voters, and they're going to have about a minute each, but, you know, I'll give you some leeway. I mean, obviously, just getting acquainted here, and we'll take it from there with some questions. I'll do an hour approximately, and then we'll do approximately an hour of audience questions. So, let's get it going. Leo, you get to lead us off.
Thanks for that, John. First of all, I'd like to thank Stevens for providing the venue, and I'd like to thank all other members of the public that are here today to listen to this debate. My name is Leo Pellegrini. I'm sure most of you know who I am. I was director of Health and Human Services for the City of Hoboken and Environmental Services for 14 years. The reason why I am running, I believe I am the most experienced and the most independent candidate in the First Ward. But then again, all my accomplishments in the City of Hoboken, all those parks renovations, fields in the City of Hoboken, last but not least, was the Northwest Park, which I advocated heavily for. Again, recreation was one of my biggest parts of why I wanted to work for the City of Hoboken. There are other major projects, as you know, the 9/11 memorial, which was dear to me, Frank Sinatra statue, just to name a couple. And also, the experience from the budgeting aspect that came into the City of Hoboken when we were, you know, we were under a 40% tax increase. We were able to decrease that over time.
Leo, can we start wrapping it up?
Yes. And that is why I am running, and I believe I'm independent and most experienced. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, thanks, folks. Ed, go right ahead.
Hey, everybody. My name is Edward Reap. I'm running in the Third Ward as part of the Love and Peace, Reap the Benefits Campaign. The main reason I'm running is because I'm a yuppie who just wanted to be left alone, but then, well, left alone and hang out with my friends, but, and, you know, do fun things. But then Hoboken politics called me, and I got involved, and I, all I want is for people to have good lives and not be stressed out and not be miserable. So, I've got a campaign focused on housing, on pets, on parking, because I don't want people to be stressed, and people can get stressed about those things with policy that is unfortunately not ideal. Now, another thing that's extremely important to me is ending the divisiveness in Hoboken politics, and I personally want to apologize inasmuch as I have contributed to that divisiveness with my own activism on social media or in person. I deeply apologize. I am partly responsible for divisiveness in Hoboken politics. It was wrong, and I also, regardless of what happens in this campaign, I want us to, you know, stop having vendettas, stop having hate, stop having...
Let's start wrapping it up, Ed.
Yeah, well, that's it. You got where I'm going. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Ed. Whenever you're ready, Paul.
Good evening. Thank you, Stevens. Thank you, the Hoboken Quality Life Coalition. Thank you, John Highness, for having us tonight. My name is Paul Prizanzano. I'm a father, a husband. I have a four-and-a-half-year-old son who's sitting in the audience, and I've lived in Hoboken almost 30 years and worked in finance professionally. I'm passionate about making Hoboken a better place for all, but by doing it together. I saw a need when I started to get involved, and I made a decision that I was going to help. I started a civic foundation to help with the fabric of our community, our children and our seniors. And we do various things through that, through scholarships, even working with other nonprofits and other community organizations to make sure some gaps are filled. The biggest issue I see facing our city is that it seems that our needs have come secondary to the ambitions of our mayor. We have a rat crisis, dirty streets, unsafe sidewalks, traffic, and a massive redevelopment happening in the First Ward that no one knows about. All everyday issues where the city is just dropping the ball. My commitment to you is to always push for better services, ask the necessary questions, and hold the right people accountable, and to fight to make Hoboken better for all of us.
Thanks, Paul. Councilman Cohen, when you're ready.
Good evening. I'm Phil Cohen, Hoboken's fifth ward councilman. I want to acknowledge my wife Rebecca here with me today. Thanks for being here tonight. I'm a 36-year resident of Hoboken. I'm running for reelection to the city council based on my record of accomplishment. I'd like to highlight four things that I'm particularly proud of. First, Brazilian City Park in the Fifth Ward, a neighborhood that was six feet under Hudson River water in 2012, is now a beautiful park with 2 million gallons of stormwater retention, defending our public waterfront. When I was elected in 2019, the city did not own Union Dry Dock site. We do today, and we're that much closer, having a fully connected public waterfront. Vision Zero Infrastructure: addressing dangerous intersections, making it safer for our families to go from place to place without fear of being hit by cars. And Rebuild by Design Resiliency: we lived here through Superstore and Sandy. We saw the devastation that it wreaked in our neighborhoods. We've made great progress. I was the council head of the Subcommittee on Rebuild by Design. I'm a member of the Citizens Advisory Board. This is a critical issue. We've made much progress on infrastructure in the last four years, but there's much more work to be done. I'm running to continue the job. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilman. Rafi, go right ahead.
Hi, my name is Rafi Cordova. I was born in the D.C. area and then raised in San Juan, Puerto Rico. Good combo. I studied at Yale University, graduating on top of my class, and that's where I picked up five languages and got the first taste of political activism and community advocacy, and I've never looked back. I started with Solidarnage, if people remember, Solidarnage with people Poland. That was my first experience, then through the AIDS crisis, and then moved to Hoboken in 1995. I've been a business owner, I still am, and I live here. I fell in love with Hoboken more so after 9/11, when I saw the divisiveness that was going on, all the hatred, and the community was like all scared and didn't know what to do. I helped found a community outreach program, a community building program that today still stands, thanks to Mayor Roberts, by the way, as the Community Bookstore Symposium. I've been able to work with the four last administrations, not allowing any ideologies to stand in the way of me and being effective. It's easy when it's...
Can we start wrapping it up, please?
I will. It's easy when it's your job, but as a regular citizen, to get things done, it's possible, and that's my message. We can all come together for real. We cannot alienate people and then say, "We want to be together." We want to be, we have to be together from the beginning. Thank you.
Thanks, Rafi. On you, Liz.
Hi, I'm Liz Ortecho. Is that too close? Is that on? Oh, I got, okay, sorry. My name's Liz Ortecho. I've lived in Hoboken for 30 years with my husband Eric and my four amazing children. I'm deeply connected to this community, and I'm running on a platform of getting back to basics, fundamental quality of life issues, aggressively dealing with the rat issue, clean streets, garbage removal, park maintenance, and building a community. That back-to-basics extends to the role of the city councilperson. I've knocked on many doors, and many are saying the same thing. They raise a concern only to be ignored, and they are not being represented on the city council. I am committed to being a neighborhood advocate, listening to and addressing residents' concerns, and finding viable solutions. I will be an independent voice on the city council, representing those who elect me and putting Fifth Ward residents first. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ed, Councilman Russo.
Thank you to all the hosts, first off. It's been a privilege to represent the Third Ward, and I'm excited to be running for my reelection. As your councilman, I've been able to bring major quality of life upgrades to our neighborhood in the Third Ward. I'm extremely proud of bringing to life my vision of an open space and recreation complex in the Third Ward. We acquired the Jubilee Center. We fought for the additional major piece of open space at Sixth and Jackson. We built the only additional indoor gym space in the City of Hoboken for decades, and we were able to ensure the plaza space at Seventh and Jackson behind the Monroe Center. With this, the Third Ward has been able to host movies under the stars, concerts, athletic leagues, and cultural festivals for our families and neighbors. We've been able to provide testing and immunizations during the worst of COVID, and we're not done. I was able to secure $15 million for a park at 800 Monroe Street, the last piece of that vision, increasing our recreation and open space opportunities in the Third Ward in an unprecedented way. In addition, housing, all of our residents, is my priority. The Housing Authority properties, including Christopher Columbus Gardens, has been designated for redevelopment. And when that's rebuilt, that will ensure housing equity for all of our residents. I've worked with Post 107 and the Housing Authority to ensure additional VASH vouchers to house homeless veterans right here in Hoboken. And finally, we approved the construction of a brand-new senior citizen building. There's so much more, and I'm sure you'll hear that throughout the night. Thank you very much.
Very good, Councilman. Thank you, everyone, for those introductions. Now, we're just, just for everyone's clarification, we're just going to keep going left to right, so the second question we'll start with Ed, and the third question we'll start with Paul, and so on and so forth. Now, so let's jump right in. On, let me just check this date. Hold on one second. So, Ed, again, we'll start with Ed. On September 22nd, the U.S. Attorney's Office for the Southern District unsealed a three-count federal bribery indictment against U.S. Senator Bob Menendez. My apologies to the Fifth Ward council candidates, because you already answered this, but nobody else did. Do you think U.S. Senator Bob Menendez should resign? Why or why not?
Well, here are my thoughts on that. When I started running for city council, I didn't know how campaign finance works, how it's very complicated with all the campaign finance accounts. And I think he has money in the bank, in his, in his, like, campaign, in his account, in his, like, campaign finance-related bank account, and, like, he has the money to run so, and he hasn't been convicted, so it is his right to run because he, we are in a country where people are innocent until proven guilty, and I think, just like, from a campaign finance perspective, he's already got this money, like, that he could use for campaigning. There's, like, no reason for him not to run. Now, do I think what he did, if he's convicted, was highly unethical and immoral and horrible? Yeah. He isn't convicted yet, and he has the right to run as a citizen, and I'm also a Republican, he's a Democrat. What do I care?
Thank you, Ed. Paul.
I'm a big believer in due process of the law. Until both sides have been presented, I think things should be slowed down a little bit. While everybody's calling for resignation, we, in society today, have kind of jumped to conclusions a little too quickly at times. While some mounting evidence might be there, I think we should still see how justice works and see what the end result is. So, during this time, I think we should watch and see and make some decisions after more stuff comes out.
Thank you.
Yes, I think Senator Menendez should resign. I was very impressed by Governor Murphy's call for the senator to resign, and particularly by Senator Booker. Senator Booker is probably Senator Menendez's closest friend in the Senate. He was a defender in his, took the witness stand in his last trial, and really was considered to be his closest ally in the Senate. I was very impressed and moved by Senator Booker's statements that our collective officials need to be held to a higher standard, and he is entitled to his day in court, but I think for the rule of law and for our country, the right thing for the senator to do is to step down. Thank you.
Appreciate it, Councilman. Rafi.
I do believe that we're innocent, that we're proven guilty, but I do think he should resign, because politics is not only about the facts, but it's about being able to be effective. If something comes along, whether it's an illness or something like this, which renders you ineffective to carry your job, to carry on with your job, you should step aside and let somebody else who's qualified do it, because people need us. People need them. People need, you know, their politicians to be effective and be able to work. And under the circumstances, I really don't think that that's a possibility. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I think he should resign. I think as elected officials, you have to be held to a higher standard. People are watching you, you're role models for our community, and under this circumstance, it seems that he needs to step aside. It's also a big distraction when we've got a lot of important issues being decided and figured out at the national level, that he needs to be engaged in, and it seems to me that he would be a little bit distracted from getting the job done.
Thank you.
Like most everybody up here, I believe in due process. I think that should play out. That's a personal decision by the senator. He's going to make that decision on his own, no matter how much pressure he gets from elected officials. The one thing that's concerning to me is the mounting evidence, as was stated. So, he will make that decision, and we will have to live with his decision on that until the court rules on his case.
Very good. And Leo?
Yeah, I believe, again, in due process, as many of the speakers have said here as well. One of the things is that he's gone through one of these trials before, right, in 2015, and he was able to manage as a senator. We cannot forget what he's done here for Hoboken as well, all of the parks and all the funding that he supported for us. So, for me, I'm not going to pass judgment. I do not kick a man when he's down. He deserves his due process, so it's his decision to make whether or not he needs to resign or not. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Now, let's take a look at something that's a little more local. Let's talk a little bit about payment in lieu of taxes. So, we're going to start with Paul this time. So, pilots at Hoboken are costing over $8 million of lost revenue to all public schools. So, what is your stance on pilots? And if there are future pilots, how do you guarantee that all Hoboken public school children, that is, public charter students and district students, get their fair share?
First off, the youth of the community are the key to the future, so we cannot deprive them of funding that they need to get them to the next level. They're the future for us. I am not, I repeat, I am not in favor of pilots. Pilots hurt our school systems. What the pilot for me is, it's a slush fund for agenda items. If there is a need of a pilot, I want to make sure that the district, or I should say, the whole public school system gets their fair share. It's a simple answer here. I am not in favor, and in times that when this would be presented to me as your councilperson, my first vote would be no, unless there's some very, very, very extreme circumstances. Thank you.
Thanks, Paul.
I disagree with the premise of the question. The concept that $8 million is not going to our public schools because of pilots, I believe is simply false. Our Board of Ed levies what their budget is. They pass the levy on to the city, and the city is basically a pass-through and gives the 100% on the dollar, exactly what the Board of Ed needs to finance the schools every year. Kids are not being short-changed. They're being fully funded with their educations, exactly what the budget the Board of Education requests, that's what they get. To have a dogmatic approach and say that pilots are never appropriate, or I'll always say no, is a mistake. The question is, is the project that is being presented for development financially viable? If it's not, it won't be built, and it won't be constructed. Perfect example, 11th and Willow, Councilman Russo and I serve on the Development Committee together. 36 affordable senior housing projects are going to be built. Studio start at $400. It's fully, it is a pilot program. The city council just approved it, approved it unanimously. It was not controversial. Why? Because in order to make...
Let's start wrapping it up, Councilman.
A pilot was necessary. So, I think we need to look at each project as it exists and see whether it's appropriate. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilman.
I agree. I think to say, like, a blanket statement that pilots are bad is really irresponsible. There are pilots that need to be, to have, for example, Marine View Plaza right now, the pilot might expire. And I've talked to people, and there's, if there's a single possibility of extending it, I will fight to extend that particular pilot, because it's workforce housing that we need to make room for in our community. I would, I would take case by case and see the merits of that, of the development or whatever it is, but the city council has voted both ways. They voted for pilots and against pilots. I'm super pro-education, as you can imagine. Nobody gets to, you know, Yale University, they don't believe in education, they don't like, like, liberal education, so kids are a priority. They are our future. I agree with that. But to say, like, never, 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 there are other needs in the community that, that might need that resource. Thank you.
Thanks, Rafi.
It's my understanding that the pilots were in place and, like, from, because they were, they were necessary in order to get development done in the city. And I don't think we're at a point where we need to have every development have a pilot. And I also believe that we need to be fair to our kids. We're taking away from the tax base when pilots are actually put in place, and I think we need to, I do think we need to look at them case by case, but I don't think we should be as generous with giving out a pilot at every turn. Thank you.
I support pilots in the City of Hoboken. I think it's unfair for people to believe that one particular project would deserve or would not deserve to have a pilot. If I asked the question of those who do not have the experience in city government, to ask, "Would you support a pilot if it was going to secure our fire department?" Or, "Would you support a pilot if it was going to secure our senior citizen housing in the City of Hoboken?" Or, "Affordable housing in the City of Hoboken?" Would they be so quick to judge and say, "I do not support a pilot"? I would believe that they wouldn't. I believe that they would, in fact, look at the merits of each individual situation and vote on it accordingly. Pilots are a tool that are set by the state. Each and every municipality has used that tool and will continue to use that tool to make sure they're doing the best that they can for the citizens in their city, and I will continue to do that.
Thanks, Councilman. Leo, go right ahead.
Yeah, my stance on the pilots is that I do believe that each project is unique in itself, so some projects, yes, you will need a pilot, where others, you might not need a pilot. But what makes you make that decision is how are the residents going to benefit from that? For me, it's a very important education that the public school system and the charter schools benefit from that. Also very important for, like we said, the Marine View Plaza, making sure that that gets renewed and doesn't, you know, we don't, no one drops the ball. That was, that was important for the residents there. So, again, it's unique in itself. Each project needs to be looked at individually, and then decisions need to be made, but with the input from the public, which is very important.
Thank you.
So, I'm going to be, oh, sorry, I will be a peacemaker and say that everyone here has great points. Paul, to my left, has excellent points, and his points are that ad hoc government without predictable rule of law for development in the long term is not a good thing, because then, you know, just like, instead of, like, having a predictable set of rules we can use to, for development projects, we just end up with, like, everything being some kind of special deal. On the other hand, to give credit to the other folks here who either took a more pro-pilot view or a more prudent case-by-case view, there are many situations where pilots make a lot of sense, where the numbers work out, and it's a good project, and it's worth, you know, sacrificing potentially some taxes to the school district in exchange for more money for another project. I, in general, the one thing I would be weary of is using pilots for residential buildings that might send some kids to the schools. Maybe, like, I understand it's more for commercial, but then again, I see all the different sides, and as a data analyst yuppie, I will come in with an open mind, both with principles for long-term benefit of the city and with a view that we live in an imperfect world and sometimes have to make beneficial decisions in the short term for everyone. God bless.
Thanks, Ed. Eddie, anything further on this? All right, we'll keep it, yes, please.
Oh, I guess to say one other thing about pilots as well, which is that I think that not everyone in the audience might know what it is, because we tend to use a lot of acronyms and jargon in political world, so I don't know if we should quickly explain it or explain terms like that, like payment in lieu of taxes.
Thanks, Ed. Yes, Rafi, you had a thought?
Yeah. My thought is, yeah, we would like to be predictable. We would like to have the city run with predictability, but as we just experienced with COVID, it's not realistic. We can have the best intentions, we can have everything laid out, but we need to have the flexibility as, as councilpeople to go one step at a time, to see what's coming before us, and I see them doing that. I see them struggling. I see councilpeople here who struggle a lot with what they have in front of them, who have to consider, and it's not like it's a pre-planned thing. You need to, you need to take your time. You need to read the material. I've heard where city councilpeople vote on things without even reading the material. So, you have to really...
Let's start wrapping it up.
Okay, I'm, I'm done.
Thank you very much.
You, your highness.
Appreciate the added, added royal highness. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we will move on to the next one, and we will start with Councilman Cohen. So, and actually, that was the perfect segue, Rafi, because you mentioned that, you know, COVID was a chaotic time, and it wreaked havoc on finances throughout the country, whether we're talking about the federal government or we're talking to municipal government at Hoboken, right? So, since the last city council election in 2019, there's been four budgets, and now you had one example where there was a tax decrease thanks to federal funding. In 2021, it went down about 4.2%, I believe, and then this year, the budget had an increase of about 6.18%. So, you know, obviously, there's a lot of flux due to finances, largely because of COVID, but if elected to the city council, what would you do to ensure that there's fiscal responsibility and stability in these budgets, and also making it maybe a little more friendly for taxpayers of the budgets going forward?
Sure. Well, everyone in Hoboken is concerned about taxes and keeping our city affordable, particularly for seniors, people on fixed income. It's a very important issue. I served on the Finance Committee in 2022 and in 20, and in 2021. 2022, I believe, we had a 0.6% tax increase municipal, and then last year, I think it was 1.4%. This year, I haven't had the privilege of serving on the Finance Committee, but I can tell you that having spent two years working on the Finance Committee and the Budget Chair, Councilman Boris here tonight, we, we work hard, and we work hard to try and figure out what's the best way that we can save taxpayer dollars, including going into surplus to try and reduce the tax bill for, for tax... including going into surplus to try and reduce the tax bill for taxpayers. It's something that we all take very seriously. We see ourselves as a fiduciary on the city. I don't see that changing. If I'm re-elected, I continue to want to take that approach. It's great to have years where we have 0.6% municipal tax increases, 1.4%. And that's, that would be great over a year. Yes, federal tax dollars helped on those numbers, but it wasn't just that. The city council worked hard to make those numbers happen. And when people had flat taxes, it was something that I was happy to share with the community. And I hope we can do it again in the future. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilman.
It's definitely a hard balancing act. I keep knocking on doors and hear people saying, we're going to have to move out of Hoboken. The taxes are out of control. And the answer that, you know, the, the regular answer is, oh, we have the lowest tax rate in Hudson County, but who cares? I mean, if it's affecting your life, that's not consolation. I think that as a councilperson, we've got to root out waste. We've got to go item by item and see where the money is and where it can be reallocated. I, I just think that there are services that are not up to par and are costing too much. And there are others that are not being funded enough. So as a councilperson, my promise is like to stick with it, to, to know that we need to, to solve this issue and stop people from getting displaced. Because the, the moment people get displaced, whether by high rent, right tax, high taxes because of educational quality, we're losing in that community. Thank you.
Thanks a lot, Rafi.
So I have a background in finance, and I've been going to the council meetings for a long time. And at every meeting, it appears that there's significant spending that gets voted on. And it's hard to know what is in the budget and what is not in the budget. There's no spreadsheet that seems to be available to kind of get into the covers of it. And then it's, it seems like a black hole. And I really have some concerns based upon some of the spending that we're seeing. So we, we're spending a lot of money on parks, park design. We're spending a lot of money on legal fees that we're not sure exactly where that money's coming from. So I think as a resident, I would like to know more information so we don't have a situation where we're going to have to see a large tax increase going forward.
Very good. Councilman Russo.
Thanks, John. And thanks for pointing out that year of reduction while I was the Chair of the Finance Committee.
You're welcome.
So personally, I, I rarely vote for any tax increases in the city of Hoboken. I don't think I have ever voted for any major tax increases in the city of Hoboken. There are certain things that I have suggested year over year. One, healthcare. The city of Hoboken's healthcare costs are astronomical. We have been trying to combat that every year. I serve on the Insurance Commission, and I look at that on a monthly basis. Surplus. We can utilize our surplus to a better extent to make sure that taxes do not increase. The bonding in the city of Hoboken over the course of time has put us at a $9 million structural deficit. That means the day, the first day of the fiscal year, we owe $9 million. That needs to stop. We have to stop bonding for small things. We have to choose our bonding wisely and make sure we're using federal grants and federal monies and state monies to offset that bonding. And then just finally, we need to continue to make proactive decisions rather than reactive decisions and stop outsourcing city services. We need to bring those in-house. We need our workers to go back to work, and they need to be here to do that.
Thank you. Leo?
Yeah, from, you know, I have extensive experience managing budgets in the city of Hoboken. And every year that I introduced the budget, it was always without increases. We went from, I'll just look at environmental services in 20, from 2018, when I was there, it was $4 million, 4.5. Today, we're at $5.2 million, okay? I won't even go get into the salary and wages. So when we're talking about there's a rat issue and we're looking to hire someone else to come in and resolve that problem, well, why don't we have it in-house already? Where we have so much, so much funds allocated to that, to that department, why are we struggling? So I think it's, it's very prudent that we look within our budgets, do more with less and not less with more. Thank you.
Thanks, Leo. If you could wait till the end, Pat, that would be great.
I'd just like to, I would just like to compliment some of the responses from folks here. I think Mike Russo gave some excellent responses about things we can do to improve the budgetary position of the city and showed knowledge due to his position on the Finance Committee, so I'd like to compliment him for that. I'd like to also compliment Liz Ortecho for speaking about the importance of not wastefully spending, particularly on projects like parks. If you go on the streets of Hoboken and I see average person, would you rather have yet another park, because we already got a lot of great parks, or lower taxes or the same taxes as opposed to an increase? They would say, oh, we already got a lot of good parks. I'll take the money. Stop with the parks. We got enough parks. Why are we always building new projects? Why are we always doing stuff? Can't we be grateful for what we have? I love my life in Hoboken. I have friends. I have an apartment I love. I have a roommate I, who I love, a great roommate, great friends, great job. I have, everything's great. The parks are already wonderful. There's just too much spending, too much stuff going on. I think I have no interest in a career in politics. This is awful. I have no interest in adding my resume. Stop with the building that's not necessary. Maintain what you have, please. God bless.
Thank you, Ed. God bless you as well. Paul?
Well, finance and economics are something that I've dealt with my entire life. In 2020, our budget in Hoboken was 120 million. In 2023, it was 137 million. During that time, we went through COVID. We got money from the federal government. We got money from the state government. During that time, we didn't learn our lesson. That's the time that you tighten the belt and prepare for a future problem again. Let me remind you something. Inflation is going nowhere. You hear the word CPI, Consumer Price Index. Forty percent of that index is based on housing. Housing prices are super high. Rent is super high. Inflation is not going away. How do you fix it in your home? You cut back. You simply cut back. Maybe you enjoy beef. Sorry to my vegetarian friends and sorry to my wife. But you cut back and maybe you eat more chicken. But you tighten your belt. And that's something we have not done in several, five, six, seven years. I think we need to take a better approach where we start to cut back on certain things. And again, pick and choose. But at the end of the day, it's runaway spending. You can't-
Paul, can we start wrapping it up?
...we've had from back in 2020. We should be back near the numbers of 2020.
Thank you. Anything further, guys? Yes.
First of all, I'm baffled by the fact that people say it's not, the information's not there, or maybe we can talk afterwards, because every time I've asked, the information's been forthcoming. I've asked for spreadsheets. I get the spreadsheets, I get the pie charts, I get, I, I, the council meetings are on, on the budget are online. There's a lot of information out there. And the other thing about the rats are that I'm proposing, where's the money coming from? We're down to directors at the moment. So those salaries are not, you know, are, are, can be allocated. We, we have money to pay for that particular person. Every store has a manager. Every restaurant has a manager. If we have no one in charge of the rats, the rats are going to stay with us. So that's, that's the other thing. And the cutbacks. Yeah, we can yell cutbacks, but I'm yelling, instead of cutbacks, I'm saying, that's employment. These are city employees. Are we going to let them off? Are we prepared to tell them, stop coming to work? Are we gonna, you know, where are we gonna cut? The services that the seniors need? Everything's more expensive since 2020. So if the budget is higher, I don't think it's, it's, you know, it's a horrendous thing. It is, it's going with the times. I agree that there's-
Can we wrap it up?
As I said before, I agree that there's a lot of fat that can be trimmed. But to be realistic, I mean, going back to 2020, it's not going to happen. Thank you.
Eddie, yes, Paul?
We spent a total of five minutes discussing the budget this year. That's despicable. Five minutes. You spend more time looking at YouTube videos or looking at Instagram. We spent five minutes. There's something wrong here. It's simple. I don't want my taxes going up. You don't want your taxes up. And renters, believe it or not, they think they don't pay taxes. They do pay taxes inside their rent. We need to tighten the belt. Inflation is not going away. We have to stop the runaway spending, and it's not through firing people. This administration went through that. They fired 26 people. We need to start at the top and cut some of the political appointees.
Liz, looks like you had a thought?
Yeah, I just, so I'm glad you're getting information, but I'm back at it. So, so I, I, and I probably don't like that. So anyway, I think there just needs to be transparency. We talked about bonding, and I feel like there's all this idea that we're gonna, there's a low interest, we're, it's no big deal, this like idea that we don't have to pay that money back. It's really not the case, right? So we need to communicate. We need to visually see where we are. We need to have transparency, and I just don't think that we have that right now. And I don't, and I don't want to see us in a, you know, at the end of the year with a huge tax increase because we were runaway spending.
Ed, looks like you have a thought?
Yes, I, I would like to compliment a bunch of people on the stage right here. I think Rafi Cordova brought up, brought up a very good point, which is that sometimes you think you can cut things from the budget. And I know I spoke about parks earlier. Sometimes like you think, oh, let's cut the budget, let's trim the fat, and you see that a lot of stuff is more essential, you know, services for people. However, I would also like to compliment Paul, who brought up a very good point related to labor. And I am against layoffs. If it worked to me, we'd make layoffs illegal. However, I'm also a private sector yuppie guy who's just doing this because I want everyone to just enjoy their life and not have to deal with, with, you know, politics. So that's my stance. But anyway, in the private sector, we have something called, if someone quits or retires, you don't refill the position. So there are ways to cut labor without firing or laying people off. Because I, I don't like firing or laying people off. But, you know, I'm in the private sector. I have a lot of friends who got laid off.
Hey, can we start wrapping it up?
Okay, wrap that. You go, Leo.
Okay, Rafi, you want to close out?
I just have to call this out. I'm, I'm sitting here with Councilman Russo, with Councilman Cohen. I see Councilwoman Fisher, and I refuse to let it be on the record that they spent five minutes discussing the budget. Because I've, I, I've met all of them, and these are people who take their job seriously. And to say that is an insult to, to, to us, who we liked them and to them who are carrying out the job. I saw, I see Councilman Quintero there and Councilwoman Jabor. I mean, what a horrible thing to say. Five minutes, a YouTube video, please. Thank you.
All right, Paul, I was-
Yes, I have to come back with that. I think you should go to the videotape. It was five minutes at the council meeting. And if you sat through the budget meetings like I did, there wasn't many questions. There wasn't much input. Not, some were long, some were, but most of the time, it was the actual departments that were speaking. The questions weren't asked. But in a public session, five minutes happened. If you need me to send you the video, because I do attend all the meetings, I can gladly send it to you. It's five minutes. Thank you.
Are we ready to move on, folks? Okay. All right. So with that, Rafi, once again, we and you are on the same wavelength. And we'll start with you this time. Let's talk a little bit about rat, rat control. I mean, what else needs to be said? Obviously, it's a real problem. The city is taking some moves, you know, with containerized garbage, with streeteries. You know, the rats aren't going to go away overnight. We've established that. But what needs to be done to remedy this serious public health issue?
I'm glad I got stuck with the rats first. This is my rat program. It's like I had to get special paper to get everything to fit. It's very comprehensive. It is, is, I've spoken to three different, well, two states and a Commonwealth. I spoke to people in San Francisco, people in New York City. I figure West Coast, East Coast, and Puerto Rico. And there's no way to say, but the administration dropped the ball on this one. I've told the mayor himself. I've spoken to the city council members. I was the first one to say, one of my neighbors, Nancy Colasura, wrote a brilliant article on Hoboken matters. I was the first one to respond, saying that they failed to make simple connections that we could do. It's not rocket science. We get a person in charge of that department. It's a temporary position because rat waves, if you, I know more about rats now than I ever wanted to know. The rat waves that come every 50, 60 years. And I met, actually, last, two Saturdays ago, I met the rat czar for Brooklyn for the 40s, in the 1940s. He was somebody's grandfather, and, and I, I met them and they told me about it. So you get somebody in charge, and then, you know, you can read this on my website. It's really long. But the other thing is, another point is the trash cans. We have to stop with this public trash cans because people are getting it. I see, I walk the city, people are putting their trash, they're getting their containers. The city gave out all these-
Can we start wrapping it up?
-containers. But we need to have public ways to dispose of garbage without conducive to littering and all these kinds of things. It's doable, folks. We gotta come together and we can make it happen. It's very, very doable. Thank you.
Thank you.
I agree. It's doable. It is the public health crisis. We've got rats in this city, and they can carry disease. And I have been knocking on doors, and it is the number one issue that I'm hearing from the residents. Whether they're 20 years old or 60 years old, no one's liking the rats. So I feel like we need to have a all-hands-on-deck approach. I think the city's been a bit slow to the game on this one. We need to get a little bit more aggressive on how we deal with it, which includes significant waste, garbage removal. And it might require multiple removals during the day on Washington Street. We need to make sure that the streeteries are clean. And we've put in an ordinance that hopefully will make a difference. But if not, we have to have, take those things down and clean the streets, and we have to exterminate. And it has to happen all at once, because if it doesn't, the rats just going to move from one neighborhood to the next. And I don't want them in my neighborhood, and I'm sure nobody wants them in theirs. So I think we need to go back to an all-hands-on-deck approach. Thank you.
Thank you.
The question is, who has the will? That's the real question. The city has done a lot, but they've done over a course of time, which was not good for the city of Hoboken. We need to be very decisive, and it needs to happen immediately. We need to remove all the parklets over the next three months. We need to clean out every rain garden over the next three months and replant them in the spring. We need to do a comprehensive baiting and extermination across the city over the course of one to two weeks. We need to use mechanical means of extermination, electrical means of extermination in our sewers. And we need to hyper-focus on those areas in town that we know there's a big problem. CO2 treatments in all the burrows. Cover those burrows. Move garbage pickup to five to seven days a week over the next three months. And reinstitute our street cleaners, what we used to call can men, walking the city and sweeping our gutters. That is how you fix this problem, and you fix it immediately. It's very, very simple, but where is the will?
Thanks, Councilman. Leo?
Yes, I was part of trying to fix the problem as well. But unfortunately, got involved too late, where we didn't have the proper resources to attack the problem. For example, in pest control, we have a contract that was, lowest bid was, I believe it was 19,000 to 21,000 at the time. That's going to take care of the city facilities and the rat problem. That's not going to happen. I said we had to be aggressive from the beginning, and we were. It would stop, and then we'll come back. You have to keep on it. When we had, when we implement, when we, all the rain gardens, what I found was, they, there was no bait. We weren't maintaining them. 20 burrows in each one. You go down to the Housing Authority and identify all these burrows. And that's what, when we're trying to stop it, it was being stopped somewhere, and then they were moving somewhere else. So you have to attack this. You have to attack it citywide. So you have to attack this. You have to attack it citywide. Just didn't have enough resources to do it. And as a matter of fact, I think contract for 88,000, which helped. We were baiting the sewers, which never was done in Hoboken. Did it citywide, but you have to continue doing it. You have to maintain it. When you build your parks and you build your, your infrastructure, you have to have a plan to make sure you maintain it. And, um, you know, it, it can be done. It can be done.
Can we start wrapping it up?
We need to be leaders, and I won't follow New York. We all know, go to New York at four o'clock in the afternoon, there are rats all over the place. So New York is not a place where I would be, uh, uh, looking at any studies. Thank you.
Thanks, Leo. Ed?
No joke, I think we all have to recognize that Mike Russo gave the best answer of anybody tonight. I'm totally serious. That was amazing. I agree with everything he said except, no, I, I mean, it, that, that needs to be a clip. That's incredible. I, that was incredible what you said. I totally agree with it. I just want to clarify, I want to take what you said and clarify a few things or maybe point out some differences. I think you said getting rid of parklets. I'm not sure if you meant that permanently. Because if you did get rid of parklets permanently, I know that a lot of us here who frequent the Bar Finnegans would be very disappointed because that's probably the best parklet in the city, and it's in the third ward. So there, there might be some compromise. We don't have to get rid of every parklet. I think we should get rid of a lot of them, but, you know, maybe, maybe we can just make it harder to have a parklet. Maybe have more rules or, or costs, but we, we have to get rid of all of them. Um, another point of differentiation, and I, I'm not sure if you spoke about this or not, but one thing I just want to point out philosophically is, I view the rat issue as a problem to be solved, not a state of affairs that requires ongoing punitive regulation. I don't want people getting fined for not taking out the trash. A lot of relationships get ruined because people fight about taking out the trash. It's no joke. Haven't you heard the jokes where people get divorced because of the trashing dishes? I'm serious. Like, like, it's a serious issue. Like, I just don't want people getting fined.
Ed, can we start wrapping it up?
You, you get the idea.
Actually, I don't know if I do on that one, but we'll, we'll, we'll come back. We'll come back, I'm sure. Uh, Paul?
That's a tough act to follow. Um, I think I can use an example on our block where we live. We've had a rat problem. And what we did as neighbors is we talked to each other. We literally alert each other of when we see the rats burrowing, when we see them in their planters, when their garbage is overflowing. And we have a mix of owners and renters. And you know what? It works. We started to mitigate the problem. I take rat tours. My wife thinks I'm crazy. But I go walk 11, 12 o'clock midnight, and I walk around at the trouble spots. And you know what? I will praise the city council for what they did. The lady garbage cans work, and the first ward people are doing it. And the rats are disappearing from those areas. I went and talked to several businesses. I just finished today at Quality Greens because we have a problem back on Court Street. I spoke to the manager, and they said, I completely understand. I'll go talk to my cooks because they're the ones that are putting the garbage out at night. It's, it's about being human. It's not only pointing the blame game. I'd like to say it's the administration's fault. That's an easy, easy thing. But I think ultimately, it's about us working together as a community. If we work together, we can fix anything. We got through COVID, right? We thought the world was coming to an end.
Paul, let's start wrapping it up.
These little four-legged animals are not gonna have an impact on this community if we work together.
Thank you, Paul. Councilman Cohen?
So I actually want to agree with Paul. I, I think that the containerization has been a cultural change in our city. I've lived in Hoboken since 1986, and seeing garbage bags on, on garbage night is just part of the landscape of Hoboken. And recently, it's become dinnertime for our rodent friends, because they can get into those bags no problem. They got sharp teeth and claws, and they're hungry, and there are a lot of them. Now you see on garbage night lined up containers dotting the block in front of everybody's home. It's a completely different situation, and it's what Cali, our carding company, said is the single best thing that a community like Hoboken could do to attack the rat problem. I'm not declaring victory by any means, but I'm saying that we have to acknowledge that things are different. And I'm hearing from a lot of people in the fifth ward asking about exemptions or how can they work with this? Seniors who have trouble lifting heavy containers, working with them with smaller containers to figure out how they can conveniently comply. Because the people in Hoboken want to get rid of the rats. We all have a common enemy. It is not a political issue. It is an issue of public health, public safety, where we all have one common enemy, the rodents, and we want to win. So the people that I'm hearing from are, how do I comply? I don't want to be fined. The city did not institute fines right away. There was a grace period until
Can we start wrapping it up?
It was extended until this week, and the goal is education and compliance. I think we've come a long way. We have a long way to go, but we should acknowledge our success.
Fair enough. Eddie, what else? Yes?
So that was very good, Michael. You either read Mike's program or you talked to the same people I did, because everything is right here. The other thing is, New York has had 37% success. They started from the top and the bottom, I mean, from the, from the middle up. So when you go to the Times Square area, they, they have almost, uh, cleared the problem. They say they started there because it's the least amount of garbage accumulation because there are not many resident, residents there. So depends on where you hang out in New York, you, you're tangling with rats or not. The other thing is, I'm glad Paul found his humanity to talk about, uh, this with his blog, because on our blog, he went taking pictures and caused all my neighbors to get some, and says, he took pictures of their garbage, most of them online, and then, then they came and ticketed them. And that was not the way I would, I would, I, I'm glad that, that he's changed his, his, his ways since then, because the way to do it is
Can we start wrapping it up?
And talk, have a conversation, have dialogue. That's the way you govern, is by communication and connecting with the people. Thank you.
Yes, Paul.
No, if you want me to say something, I will.
You were grabbing the mic. I know you were ready to go.
Ultimately, when you have a problem, you use examples. We're visual people. If they got fines, I blame the administration. They're the ones that went after it. I'm bringing issues to their attention. If they got a fine, I apologize. If you expect me to pay for it, I'll be happy to, to make them whole, if you think I did something cruel. But at the end of the day, I was bringing a point that nobody was paying attention to. So working together, I've said it, I've done it. I've gone and spoke to businesses. Why isn't the administration done it? Why does it take a citizen to go talk to people? I did it on my own time, not for political gain.
Councilman?
Just three other eight. Clear, concise, and swift action. That's how we solve this, and that's within three months. Not forever, but within three months. We need to work with our partners in the city. Stevens, the Board of Education, Public Housing Authority, the shelter, the business community. All of us need to work together. Those relationships are how we tackle this problem. And Ed, I appreciate your, your comments. Remember, I'm on the ballot, 1E. Hopefully, you will be voting. So I appreciate it.
All right. Well, now we're having a good time. Who else?
Just an observation. Everybody here has really good ideas. I mean, we've all got great ideas, and we have to wonder, why are we not? There is no sense of urgency to get done. Like, we need to have this get done. It's a basic quality of life issue. And there's no reason why all of these ideas couldn't be executed and done relatively quickly.
All right.
Oh, yeah, just, just real quick to, to add to that, I think it's also very important. We've had a lot of issues with the rat, rat problem because of construction projects. Those construction projects, parks projects, we have to make sure that we are baiting, and that wasn't happening. So when you have road openings, you have to make sure you are baiting, because that's when they're gonna come out. That's one of the most important things that you, we, we need to do. Again, construction, make sure it's in the, in a bit specifications, that whoever gets awarded that, that job has to make sure that they have pest control. And, and Ed, yeah, you confused me too. I didn't know if you knew you were running yet, Michael.
No, so, um, I'm gonna make a joke right now. So I'm totally joking, but this is a joke I'm gonna make. But it's half joke and half serious. If I, um, my plan is to win the third ward city council seat and then to, um, talk to Rafi Cordova about his excellent idea for a rat czar, and then open up the position to, uh, public competitive hiring and have it pay a lot of money and invite Mike to work for that. Okay, but no, no, in all seriousness, I, I just want what's best for the city. Give credit where it's due. Look, politics is awful. I would, but I just want people who are in this room right now to make the city better. I don't care about any vendettas. I literally just want to enjoy my life and hang out in love and peace, and that's what we're about. So if someone can do it better than me, let them do it. I think I can do it better because I'm kind of a, I'm so desperate as a yuppie to just make life good and reasonable. So I just, I'm incentivized, and for other people too. So that's what I want. Okay, I'll stop.
Thank, thank you, Ed. Councilman Cohen?
Thank you. I'm not looking for the rat czar job, uh, but, uh, but maybe Councilman Russo is. Just a quick comment about urgency. Uh, a lot of people are critical of the fact that our outdoor dining establishments were attracted to rodents and, and to live under the surfaces and that sort of thing. Uh, I, I sponsored an ordinance to have strict rules with respect to cleaning and maintenance, very specific. Uh, we, we worked hard in committee on those issues, uh, included when to clean them, how often they need to be inspected. If they couldn't clean underneath the surfaces, they had to come up with a plan within 30 days from now with a trap door to have allow access or fill holes. When I asked my council colleagues if we could waive the esople period and have it take effect immediately instead of in 20 days, it passed unanimously. So the council has taken urgent steps with respect to outdoor dining. They have done it. We took containerization first, we did this next. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further? All right, Ed.
So wait, if, if I misspoke, I, the joke I meant to make was inviting Russo to apply for the job. So if I misspoke, I apologize.
I, I think you were quite clear on that point, Ed.
Oh, good. I apologize. I'm sorry. I misunderstood your, your follow-up joke. Um, it was a good, it's always okay.
Okey-dokey. So with that, uh, we're gonna go on to the audience questions now. We've got quite a few. Obviously, we're not gonna get through them all, but I'll do the best I can. Uh, we have Eduardo over here with a pencil and some note cards. If anyone is interested in still submitting a question, we'll get through as many as, uh, humanly possible here. So we'll start with Liz. This is, uh, about traffic safety slash vision zero. So the audience question is, what are you going to do to stop cars from proceeding through the intersections without stop signs when they see a pedestrian in the street who intends to cross?
Um, sorry. Um, uh, so pedestrian safety is a really big issue in town. Um, I actually have been hit by a car. And I was lucky at the time that my son was a few steps ahead of me when that actually happened. And so when it comes to pedestrian safety, I think we need to continue, it's an evolving and continuous process. We also need to be focused on enforcement, which seems to be a prob, like, we don't have any e cops taking care of inside these, some of the e scooters, which are an issue, and, um, speeding, and, um, making our, our intersection safe. Have we done a good job? Yes, I think the city has done a pretty good job, but can we do more? Absolutely.
Holding closer, you said. What was holding closer? How was it able to do?
No problem. Thank you very much for the response. Councilman Russo?
Thank you. Um, vision zero is very important to me. I was one of the founding members of that task force here in, in the city of Hoboken. Uh, while I served as the chairman of the Parking Transportation Subcommittee, uh, it really is about enforcement, right? So we have to make sure that our municipality is, is enforcing not only stop signs, but, uh, traffic lights, yield signs, all of our different, uh, measures to really slow down traffic in the city. Some things that we should continue to do, varying roadway surfaces, using different types of surfaces. Cobblestone, stamped concrete, varying the heights of those surfaces, using speedhumps at the corners, using large stop signs, lighted stop signs like we have been, making sure that they're not only just on one side of the block, but on both sides, so we don't have a visibility issue. There are a lot of things that we can continue to do to make sure that our citizenry is safe.
Thank you. Leo?
Yes, uh, I think it's very, yes, it's very important that, uh, we, we, in public safety and the parking transportation department, just continue to study and review the data that, that, that gives them the information on where those areas where we're having problems, and, and then you can enforce in those particular areas. It's very difficult to be in every quadrant of the city. You don't have the manpower to do that, but it's very important to just review the data and making sure that we can put some safety measures in those problematic areas. Thank you.
Thanks, Leo. Go ahead, Ed.
I'm going to spice things up and take a different perspective.
I'm shocked. Go ahead.
Oh, so, so here's my stance. Look, there are definitely things you can do to improve public safety on the roadway. Um, I'm not sure if you guys know what the bollards are, those white poles. They're great on some corners. On other corners, they're totally unnecessary. Here's the thing no one talks about with pedestrian safety, pedestrian personal responsibility. And do you know what's a big cause of pedestrians getting into issues? Them being on their phones too much. And do you know why they're on their phones too much? Because their lives are miserable, and they have nothing better to do and think about. And no, no, no other friendships or things or people to keep them off their phones and paying attention. They're just on Twitter like me, walking into the street. And I, I, I will never do that again, I promise. But anyway, look, in all seriousness, there are things we can do to improve safety on the roads, but something we totally ignore all the time is education for pedestrians about how to safely cross a street, which people used to get taught when they were in elementary school, and everyone's forgot it. It's like cursive.
Yeah. Thank, thank you, Ed. Paul?
Uh, vision zero is excellent, uh, but we have to ensure that there's some unintended consequences that are happening. I'm a data guy and I'm a pattern guy, and I watch things, and I watch Washington Street. In the old days, you could go through light patterns of eight lights. It's down to two because of vision zero improvements. What that has done has forced cars onto residential streets. I brought this up at some of the CAPS meetings. It's a little difficult to kind of, uh, unless you're watching it every day. Uh, what I think we should do is actually try to keep traffic where majority of the vision zero improvements are on Washington Street and keep it out of the residential communities. We're humans. We find quickest point from point A to point B. But I think in pedestrian safety, we're missing one thing. I don't know about you, but in Ward One, we have the commercial district and a lot of the restaurants. My son walks behind me majority of the time because we have e-transportation on the sidewalks. And let me clarify, it's not cyclists. It's our delivery people. The bottom line is, I want e-bikes off the sidewalks. End of story. It's an accident waiting to happen, and then we're just gonna sit there and go, oh, we dropped the ball on that. Oops. We can't have that happen.
Can we start wrapping it up, Paul?
Streets. Let's protect them on the sidewalks where it's made for pedestrians. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilman Cohen?
So shortly after I was elected, Mike Quiello, who lives over on the 1200 block of Grand Street, had reached out to me and complained that his young children were not feeling safe at the intersection of 12th and Grand. I reached out to the city about whether we could get a stop sign there. Resilient City Park was a construction site at the time, and you couldn't do the traffic warrant study that was necessary because streets were closed. It was just not an appropriate time. If you wanted meaningful data as to whether a stop sign was warranted, you had to wait for the construction project to end. So we put, uh, uh, signs in the crosswalks to alert that there were pedestrians. We daylighted the corners of 12th and Grand. But the goal all along is to get a stop sign. The warrant study was finally done this year in April, and just last week, the stop signs emerged on 12th and Grand. And the neighborhood by the Rivington is thrilled. These people were really feeling unsafe walking there. It's there today. And it's because we worked on it together. I want to thank the mayor's administration, Ryan Sharp over at Garcia, and the team over there who worked together to get this done. Three years in progress. As far as getting bikes off the sidewalk, I've been an advocate for having a true protected bike lane on Washington Street, which doesn't exist today. What good is a bike lane if you can double park in it? What good is a bike lane if you have
Can we start wrapping it up?
If you have shoppers parking in it? We need to have a true protected bike lane so people will be safe of ages, of all ages and ability, riding on Washington Street with little kids. Can't do it now. I'd like to see it my next term. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilman. Rafi, whenever you're ready.
Hello, hi. So vision zero works, or it's been implemented now. Uh, I was at 450 Newark, and one of the, I knocked on a random door, and they start talking about this very subject. And they said, yeah, vision zero, because you can't see anything. And, and, and there's like, he brought me downstairs and showed me there were no street lights. It was like, nothing. That, that the cars were going, the, the crosswalks were faded. And it was, it was a nightmare, the traffic there that night. He made me stand there for, for a while, to bless you. For a while to, to witness the whole thing. So I reached out to the director, to, to Director Sharp. I must say, he was very responsive. The crosswalks were painted, and the lights were repaired on the stop sign, because it's supposed to flash. But if it doesn't flash, so you gotta, you gotta keep up with it. And instead of trying to keep all traffic where vision zero is, how about bringing vision zero to the rest of the city? So that, I, I've also had a mom yesterday who lives on, on Park Avenue complaining about crossing to Church Square Park. It, it has to be expanded. It has to be fixed. The bollards are not sturdy enough. I've seen drunks that shouldn't have been driving, to, to, to be honest.
Can we start wrapping it up? Can we start wrapping it up?
Go over them and park on them, like, kick them out of the way, right? And it's unconscionable. So we need to, we need enforcement. And just one thing about the bikes, I also think that if there's some sort of protected bike lane that could, we could find that fits geographically in Hoboken, we should go for it, because the bikes will come off the sidewalk. They're afraid. I've seen horrendous accidents bikers have had because of the lack of a protected bike lane. Thank you.
Thanks.
Coming. Just add, I think the question was very specific about residents walking into crosswalks and trying to cross the street. So I do appreciate everyone else's stance on other pedestrian safety measures. However, the very specific fact is that enforcement at our crosswalks is going to be the key. I do want to highlight, though, in the city of Hoboken, we are currently down on our table of organization in the police department. That is a major factor when it comes to enforcement across the city of Hoboken, and it needs to be said. We need to increase our police force, we need to make sure that we have the personnel in place to make sure that that enforcement can actually happen.
Anything else? All right, so.
My answer was on topic, though, right? About the personal responsibility at the crosswalks?
Yes, yes, it was, Ed. Thank you for clarifying that. Okay, so now we will start with Councilman Russo, and we will continue with the audience questions. So this is what I, I think this is an interesting one. So in 2020, looking at 2023, do you think there's anything that the administration should apologize for? If you could pinpoint one thing, and if you don't think they should apologize for anything, why do you feel that way?
The rats. Right? I mean, honestly, and I take some of that on us, right? As a city councilman, I take some of that on as well. I wish we have acted faster. I wish we would have implemented some of the things I spoke about tonight faster in the city of Hoboken. I think we should all apologize for that, as the administration, as the council, as anyone who has anything to do with the situation when it comes to the health and union services in the city of Hoboken. We need to act. I can't reiterate it enough. If we do not do this, if we do not make a decisive action, we will be dealing with the rats well into the spring. This needs to happen now.
Thank you. Leo?
I guess you just, you took on the rats. So I guess the one issue I'm going to touch on recreation. For the first time in Hoboken's history, we didn't have soccer in September. It's October, probably not going to have if in a few more weeks. It's supposed to be better, but it obviously isn't. We sold out a contract for $180,000 to outsource it and got rid of volunteers. You got rid of the fabric of the community, which was all of the, all the community being involved and being able to sponsor teams. That was eliminated. It's a total embarrassment.
Thank you, Leo. Ed?
This question is a pivotal moment where I can either choose to make my campaign really silly or really serious, but so as not to disappoint my good friends who believe in me, I'm going to give the serious answer. The single biggest issue was when Mayor Balla vetoed the rent control agreement that would have, like, given some concessions to the landlords, but have overall led to a situation where rent control was sustainable in Hoboken, and now we're in a situation where there could be a referendum that could threaten the future of rent control forever and would really be utterly catastrophically horrible. So yeah, Mayor Balla, you shouldn't have vetoed that rent control agreement, which many people here voted for. Thank you so much for doing that, which could lead to a situation where rent control can go away in Hoboken and an other housing catastrophe that will make people stressed out and miserable. And that's why I'm running. Politics is awful, but we have to do it so that we don't get screwed. I'm sorry.
You're forgiven, Ed. Thank you. Paul?
I would like this administration to apologize for all the wasted legal expenses that we have. Today, there was just a ruling for Pegasus Partners in the northwest part of the, of the city. They're two-for-two now for suing us on a decision that Mayor Balla had made. Now it's going to be up to the financial damages that you and I could potentially pay for, or maybe they're going to give away some of our land. So I think that's the one thing, that there should be an apology to the taxpayers for wasting money on the legal waste.
Thank you. Councilman Cohen?
Yeah, so I passed a resolution, the majority of the council approved, that we should have a protected bike lane on Washington Street, and that there should have been a redesign done for it, and it was supposed to be done in 2022, last year. Didn't get a new design. So I'm looking for my apology. Because how have that protected bike lane on Washington Street, the council passed the resolution for it? It is a good thing for the city, it's the right thing. I know Bike Hoboken believes in it, and people who want to go for bike rides with their kids down on Washington Street simply can't do it. So they had followed through with my resolution and done what they requested. We'd be in a better place today. And it was a low-cost request. Didn't have to be fancy with lots of infrastructure. You could use, if you look at Jersey City, there's lots of low-cost materials. You see it all over the place, and they work. And you don't have to have like a, you know, because we spent a lot of money fixing Washington Street, no one, and certainly not I, who just spent a fortune. But if you look at what Jersey City has done with relatively inexpensive materials, we could make Washington Street a safer place where there will be more business, because more families will be coming to shop comfortably, safely. So I wish the administration would follow through on that request. Thank you.
Very good. And Rafi?
I have to take a breath, because I've been outraged not only at this, but at every other administration since I moved to Hoboken, because nobody has addressed the unhoused. They just call them the homeless. The homeless people, they're human beings that live amongst us, and we just treat them like they're a nuisance, like they're part of the, you know, they're ruining the aesthetics of the town, the core. And no administration has done anything proactive to really remedy this problem. They just say, oh, the homeless, the homeless. First of all, there's no such thing as a homeless. It's universe, it's, first of all, it's a universe. Each one is a unique human being. You can be a human, you can be homeless because you don't have the finances, you can be homeless because you have mental illness, you can be homeless because you're a substance abuser. Each one, each category. You can be homeless because you're trying to escape the law, because you're wanted somewhere else and you're parading yourself as a homeless person here. Also, the administration doesn't make a distinction between the homeless people and panhandlers, who are not homeless, who are housed and who come here as a business, because we're generous as a community. I know people who dish out twenties, fifties, hundreds, and they know it, they come. We blame the homeless. And there's no such thing. I think.
Can we start wrapping it up?
Yeah, right now, I'm working with April Harris, who's here tonight. She's honoring me with her presence here, with Reverend Forbes, with Mr. Bacon from the Garden State Fiscal Board, to put a task force, so we can either create a database to keep track of people and see how best to serve that community, and to do something proactive, because it's been going long enough in Hoboken, and it comes up in every single debate, and time after time, and nobody's doing anything. Thank you.
Thank you, Rafi. And Liz?
Okay, so I've listened to all the issues, but I think there's one overarching thing that we need to recognize, is that we have a mayor that's got one foot out the door. And he has decided to legislate and develop in order to propel his career to the next level. And as a result, all of these things, all of these quality of life issues that we're discussing tonight are going to the wayside. So we need an apology that our mayor isn't putting the residents first.
Okay. Anything further, folks? We covered a lot of different topics there. Okey-dokey. So we will move on to the next one, and we'll go back to the top, so we'll start with Leo. Now, we heard earlier in the year that there's a group that wants to do a ballot referendum on rent control. Obviously, it hasn't happened, so maybe it won't, maybe it will, you know, we'll have to just wait and see. But what is your position on rent control in the bio square city?
Yeah, I am, you know, lifelong resident and traditionalist, so I believe that rent control needs to stay in Hoboken. I, you know, it's a balancing act, though, right? You know, a lot of people confuse rent control for affordable housing, and that's not affordable housing. We have to have better programming for affordable housing and separate the two. But having said that, we also have to make sure that, you know, we're taking into account the property owners, right? We have to look at their situation as well. We have to make sure that we can't just go by CPI and they're not getting anything in return. They have costs that they're incurring, and there are times, like in COVID, where there's, they weren't paying any rents, tenants weren't paying rents. They were, they were burdened with that, with the, you know, paying for that. So I think it's, it's a balancing act, but like I said, we need to get together and sit, both sides, tenants and property owners, sit at the table and come up with solutions. And it's got to change. It's got to change, because the market conditions dictate how it should work. So.
Can we start wrapping it up?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I've definitely, I've definitely lost a few Republican votes, me being a Republican who supports rent control, but that's okay. I'm more on the physically liberal, socially centrist wing. Okay, let me tell you how it works. Look, rent control needs to be sustainable for renters and landlords. I think that's why having compromise agreements like the one that the mayor vetoed would have been awesome. Furthermore, I think that, I think it's right that we need to clarify that there's room for affordable housing and rent control. One thing I love about rent control versus affordable housing is that rent control is more equitable. I would describe affordable housing as Medicaid, and rent control as universal healthcare. So for all those of you that like a universal healthcare system like Sweden, you would like rent control. And for those who like the way we have it now, where you have affordable housing, and where you have, sorry, the way we have it now, where you have Medicare and then free-market healthcare, that's more of a system of unregulated plus affordable housing. I'm still pro-affordable housing, I just want everyone to benefit from good housing, you know, even if you're middle class, I'll admit it. One other piece to help small landlords, we should get rid of the Hoboken Housing Alliance tax for small landlords, because even though the Hoboken Housing Alliance does a, sorry, the Hoboken Business Alliance, even though the Hoboken Business Alliance does a lot of great things.
Can we start wrapping it up?
It doesn't really make sense for the small landlords to be paying for those things. And, you know, and the whole flower pots is not that great.
Okay. Yes, Paul?
We need rent control in Hoboken. I hear this across the community, but it has to be fair. That said, the mayor vetoed a compromise between two people that did not speak for 30 years. A friend of mine, I still consider her a friend, sat down with a landlord advocate, and they put something together. The fact that somebody sat down with somebody for 30 years and they didn't talk, and they brought something to the council, and the council passed it, and the mayor vetoed it, caused this problem. The landlord advocate said he would disappear if they took the compromise. Well, guess what? Come the fall, rent control could change from the way we know it. Vacancy decontrol will be that part of it. I'm also extremely concerned at the, I hope you're following this, in Union City, there was another rent control thing that just passed up there, that actually doesn't bode well, that could roll down the hill here, that the landlord advocate could push. So things could really change here, and I think with that one veto, where the mayor didn't listen to what the council wanted, and listened to two seeing, two people that were opposing sides getting together and working together, that has to tell you something. So I think there is a chance that rent control could change as we know it because of that one veto.
Thanks, Paul. Councilman Cohen?
In July of 22, Caitlin Mathany, who's a resident at 1101 Adams, reached out to me. She'd gotten a legal rent calculation, which said that her apartment should be $2,830 a month. Her landlord was saying, the management company was saying that she had to pay rent of $4,028. She lawyered up. She said, this is ridiculous, I've got a legal rent calculation, $2,830. They compromised it $3,500. She reached out to me. Her son was a kindergartner at the Wallace School. She didn't know where else to turn. She couldn't afford to go head-to-head against this huge management company. I reached out to Equity Residential, I reached out to Mayor Balla's office, we sent strongly worded letters to the Rivingtons' management company, and they agreed to reduce her rent to $28.20, that's a compromise, $28.20, $10 below the legal rent calculation. And she got over $2,000 of credits, or being overcharged, over $2,000 on top of that. Ultimately, it wasn't just Ms. Mathany who got the benefit of this, but later that year, the Rivington admitted that they were subject to rent control for all 250 units, thousands of dollars of credits to everyone. So do I believe in rent control? I talked to Caitlin this morning. Jack's loving third grade at the Wallace School, and Lucy's in the pre-K3s, and they're really happy, and they're lucky.
Can we start wrapping it up?
And they would have had to move that a town if not for rent control and our intervention on her behalf.
Thank you, Councilman. Pat, please do yell out. Rafi?
Hi, thanks. Well, it's no secret that I was elected as the chair of the rent board in January, and rent control is part of my blood. Actually, to say it better, housing justice is part of my, my blood, because it's not just about rent control, it's about affordable housing, it's about also tenants in general. Doesn't matter if they're in luxury buildings or not. There's, there's a huge problem in Hoboken. Now, yeah, the mayor vetoed something, but it's not like he vetoed, they were competing ordinances. He vetoed one, the other one stands, but it doesn't go far enough. I would have tabled that, I would have voted to table that first ordinance. I think Councilwoman Fisher was the one who proposed to table it, and then it was voted against her. I would have tabled it to allow for people to have more conversation, to allow the public to come in and weigh in, like she wanted, and it didn't happen. So here we are. Now landlords, the mom-and-pop landlords are always left out of the conversation, they've been shut out long enough. First of all, the referendum, I wanted unequivocally to, to say, I'm against anything that the MSTA would bring forth. Doesn't matter what shape it takes. No, we're going to fight it, we're 65% renters, and we're going to win it. So they can, they can bring it on if they want, but we're not going to allow that to take over our town, whether it's, you know, coming from Union City or anywhere else.
Can we start wrapping it up?
Yeah. So I wanted to talk to landlords, small, small mom-and-pop landlords, please, call me. There's ways you can recoup, there is, there is a tax surcharge you can pass on. You have the water and sewage surcharge, capital improvement surcharges, and also for tenants, reach out. People, people don't know about rent control. One of the things I would do as a councilperson is, you know, do an outreach program, educate the, the community so that they know both sides. Also, I know.
Rafi, I'm going to stop you there.
The second point, the second point, very quickly. I have a tier, a tier, I'm proposing a tier solution for landlords. If they own like one or two or three units, you know, going by the number of units, they have incentives versus like middle-range versus humongous landlords. They should not be measured by the same, you know, with the same stick. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Liz?
Um, I've, it's, this is a really complicated issue, rent control. It's threading a needle, a balance between what's good for the renters and what's good for our landlords. I applaud Phil's work on the Rivington. I really appreciate that he went to bat for that particular community, but it kind of contradicts some of the things that he's done on the council. He introduced a ordinance that would have essentially increased, in order to have landlords recoup their pre-COVID expense or losses, it would have increased rents by 35%. So I'm interested in equality in the process, whether it is a luxury building, or if it is a small third, three-floor walk-up, I'm about making sure that everyone is taken care of in the rent control, the laws.
Thank you. Councilman Russo?
As a town advocate and a member of the Hoboken Housing Authority, I've been fighting for the ability to house all of our residents, no matter what level they are, whether that's the lowest of the socioeconomic scale or the highest of the socioeconomic scale. Rent control is actually very important amongst the entire scale, that entire continuum. Let's use an example. If you're paying $6,000 a month for rent, and all of a sudden, now you're paying $8,000 a month for rent, that is absolutely unconscionable. It doesn't matter if your rent is $400 or $4,000. It doesn't matter if your rent is $400 or $4,000. Rent control should apply. Now, there are state laws that prohibit us from applying rent control to everything in the city of Hoboken. However, what we should do is we should define what that word unconscionable means. Because every time someone goes to court, it's now up to that individual judge to define what that means. If we as a city define that, we have a better leg to stand on to protect our tenants. Let's take the example of the Avalon versus 800 Jefferson. The Avalon is trying to gouge its residents. 800 Jefferson, who is still in flux and doesn't know if they fall under rent control. Has decided, well, has decided that they are going to keep their rents within the rent control limits. That is a good landlord versus a bad landlord in this city. And we have to differentiate the two.
Thank you very much. Eddie, think further?
I just wanna say I couldn't be happier right now. I wrote an article in, in the Hudson County View talking about this exact policy or, or a, a similar policy, maybe not exactly. And my opponent has adopted it to his platform. If I lose this election, I hope I don't, I'm gonna work as hard as I can to not lose, but if I lose this election, I will still be so, so happy because I can officially say that I influenced my opponent to adopt a policy I guess we both believe in. So God bless you, Mike Russo.
But thank, thank you. This isn't unusual about a severity for a Hoboken anything. So Rafi, looks like you had some thoughts.
Two quick things. One is to, um, say that part of my proposal is to cap, to define unconscionable at 7.5%. Nor did it at 5%. I think for Hoboken, that's too low because again, to be fair to landlords, I think 7.5 is a good compromise. And two, um, I see Councilwoman Jatino, uh, Councilman Doyle is not here, but Councilwoman Jatino, Councilman Doyle and Councilman Cohen have been the only people to come to the rent board meetings and taken any interest in that, uh, in a, in a direct way. So, uh, this is an open invitation to all of you and everybody on, on, on the day of to drop by if you wanna learn more. Because that's where you see the nitty gritty of what happens. You see what the landlords' needs are and what the tenants' needs are. And you can learn a lot from, from going. It's every other Wednesday, we alternate with the city council. Thank you.
Thank you, Rafi. Anyone else on this topic? Okay, let's keep it rolling. We got a lot of audience questions. So this time we will start with Ed. And this one says, why does the city have all these lawsuits when it comes to develop it? And what can we do to ensure they don't happen as often?
Oh, I, I wanna make a joke, but it's gonna offend some people here. Well, it's because there's too many lawyers on the city council. Oh, wait, that was too much. Was I not allowed to make that joke? I'm sorry. I actually know a lot of wonderful, lovely, amazing lawyers. Okay, keep it real. No, no, in all seriousness, the reason why we got so many lawsuits relates to something that Paul Presanzano said earlier, in spirit at least, which is that there's probably far too much ad hoc, I'm sorry, that, that lawyer joke was really wrong. I'm super sorry. I love lawyers, I don't love, okay. What Paul Presanzano was getting at earlier with, with his complaints about pilots, where our development is done in far too ad hoc a manner. We need to do things in a much more straightforward, predictable manner. Cause when you are predictable and you don't constantly change things, you end up with less lawsuits. And I truly apologize for that lawyer joke, I'm sorry.
All right, thanks, Ed. Paul?
It's interesting because in the first ward, we're gonna go under a massive redevelopment, basically on the outside of town, starting with the post office, if hotels that gets their, um, financing and then the L Corp projects and TPW garage and the list goes on. What I'm really concerned about here is what happened in the Northwest. That the fact that without, and again, maybe my legal friends can tell me a little bit about this, but it didn't even seem like there was a trial. Basically, the judge ruled on basically what was on the paper that the city was wrong. Seems pretty clear cut when I read things that the mayor and the administration make some assumptions and they just go with it. And it's easy for them to do that because they've got on how, they, they got lawyers on hand. And those lawyers are paid for by our tax dollars. So I think it starts at the top. And that once we can realize you have to work with inside the law and you just can't do what you want, things would be a lot better.
Thank you. Councilman Cohen?
There's a lot of money in Hoboken real estate, if you guys haven't heard about that. Uh, these projects are worth tens of millions, sometimes hundreds of millions of dollars. Uh, Hilton Hotel Project was a project that was approved. There was a plan that would allow for the community center to be finally built out. There was going to be a library branch there, the pool is gonna be renovated. Everybody was excited about it. There was a press conference, I think Councilwoman Fisher went to the press conference. Uh, and the neighboring property sued and convinced the judge that it was an improper community give back and the whole project was stopped. So what happens in litigation? You gain leverage, you get the ability to negotiate the settlement, you may be able to walk away with money. This was a developer that had nothing to do with the project, it just happened to be a neighbor and the project got stopped. So why is there litigation over developments in Hoboken? Because there's a lot of money at stake in these developments. So I think that I reject the idea that because there's litigation, it means that things are being done illegally. I, people have an incentive to sue because they want, they have an interest in getting something out of the loss. That's, that's what I do professionally and it keeps me busy. Uh, not all the cases that are brought are legitimate cases. Most cases get dismissed. The city has a pretty good track record of settling cases for reasonable amounts of money. We have lots of close.
We start wrapping it up?
Before the, the community meets, where we settle cases that are brought all the time. Uh, but often they're paid for by an insurance fund. Some cases are not, but it really isn't a me, a measure of illegality as opposed to the nature of our litigious world.
Thank you. Rafi?
Frankly, I'm sick and tired of the mayor tonight because this is a city council and we should be talking about the city council ourselves. The city council makes so many decisions and can actually handcuff any mayor if they do decide. So it's an easy way out to blame someone as opposed to us taking the responsibility as citizens first for voting. And the second one as city council, you know, people, uh, those who are fortunate enough to be on the council for going along with this development. Now, I think that if you, um, monitor, if you really stick to it, if you can prevent a lot of that. But we do live in a very litigious society. Anybody can sue about anything. On the rent board, I see it all the time. People can sue, they don't like my, you know, two cents, my rent is over, I will sue. And i, i, you know, you can pay a lot of money over very little. And there's nothing we can do about it, the court system is what it is. Um, and i, i, you know, it's just, let's take it to what we can do as city council people. And if we need, again, I'll say it again, cause I like the expression, if we can handcuff any mayor, any administration. There's nothing without the city council. So let's stick to us, to what this point is, not look outside. Thank you.
Thank you. Liz?
Well, I, there, there are a lot of litigations, period. Um, I would say that we have an administration that feels as if they can get away with the law. And as a result, we, they cut corners and they might negotiate things that don't seem right or they misinterpret the law. And as a result, we end up in a lot of litigations. And it's gonna cost taxpayers a lot of money at some point.
Thank you.
I think the question was why are there so many lawsuits and litigation in the city? I, I think that boils down to three different things. First, money, of course. Second is equity. And then the third one is usually political agenda. Those are the three main reasons why we have so many lawsuits in the city of Hoboken. And all the parties are to blame. The city can't admit when they're wrong. Developers sometimes want a little bit more than they actually deserve. And third party lawsuits are usually motivated by someone's political agenda. So it takes all of those parties to say, I'm going to stop or I'm going to change. And look at that individual situation, that one litigation and come to the table and compromise and negotiate so that this city benefits. Not one party over the other, but the entire city.
Thanks, Councilman. Ed Leo?
Yeah, uh, he took the words right out of my mouth. Yeah, certainly a political, uh, obviously political agenda. Um, and again, we, we don't have, I believe, the right people on a table, either the, the litigating, uh, uh, for the city, um, which causes problems. And, and you know, to, to Rafi's, uh, comment, uh, this is how it works in Hoboken's politics, right? So even if you're a, a council person, um, if you have the majority and it's five-four, no matter what you say or do or don't believe, it's not gonna happen. That's how it works. That's how it's been working for a long time. That's why we need independent council people on the day is that at times you, you just disagree. You might, you know, you're, you're with the mayor and you know what? We, we disagree on this one. You have to do it. You just can't vote five-four every single time.
Doki doki, anything further? Yes. Let Rafi go first.
Yeah, to that point is like, if any administration is getting away with things, it's because we're letting them. I'll say that again. We are letting them if they do that. And second, about teams, there's so much like the ballot team and the other team and the opposition team. I just want all of you to know that my team would be a team of nine people, myself and eight others. Whoever is fortunate enough to end up on that, on, on, on the chairs, those are the people I'll be working with. Whether it's Liz or Phil, I'll be working with each one. Whether it's Marla or, or Tiffany, I'll be, I would love to work with them and dialogue with them. I will never shut anybody out. It'll be a whole team, in my opinion. That is the only way this works. Who? You too, you too, of course. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Ed?
I just wanted, well, I was gonna talk about something else, but first let me reiterate what Rafi Cordoba said about, you know, yeah, every, it does, we, let's stop with the factions and the hate and the ba, 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 ba. Let's all be friends. And also, the reason why I made a big point about apologizing for that lawyer joke is that truthfully, everyone has something to add. Everyone can be our friends. No one here is evil. I really, really, really just want us to get along and enjoy each other's company and lives. And if I were on city council, it would be my great honor to truly work together for everyone. And truth be told, we do need a bunch of lawyers on city council because the truth is that like legal stuff like freaks me out. Like I do, I never wanna ever do anything wrong or get into a lawsuit or anything like that. It just gives me a panic attack. Like if someone told me I was being sued, I would like, like start crying, like, so please, um, let's minimize lawsuits. If we're all gonna have lawsuits, yeah, you know, we do have lawyers on city council. That's why I made it, and God bless you all, love and peace.
Thanks, Ed. Uh, Eddie, think further?
Yes. I think it ultimately starts, starts at the top. The example's there. And I think if you believe that everybody's gonna work together, you, you don't realize what the world's all about. Every one of the big votes are five-four and there's horse trading games that happen beyond the scenes all the time. That's part of politics. Sometimes you have to give to get. But at the end of the day, on a lot of big decisions that are costing the city a lot of bit, a lot of money, some of those decisions aren't smart. I mean, I, I just keep referring back to this Northwest because there's gonna be a financial, potential financial settlement. It's a $750 million project. Pegasus is two for two. They're gonna probably be three for three. And I don't know where we're gonna get the money. And I don't wanna see any of our land given away either. That's what I'm very, very concerned about. So it starts at.
Start wrapping it up, Paul? Thank you. Sure.
Well, I can swing both ways. I will not be another five because basically Paul will be a five-four on the other side. And I think that's as bad as five-four on this side. I think that you need somebody who is willing to talk to both sides and swing back and forth and say what is right, one case at a time, one audience at a time, one example at a time, without compromising, without, you know, no holds barred, bringing people to task and having dialogue. And yeah, it comes from the top, all these platoons are great, but no, it comes from connection. It comes from getting to know each other, from trusting each other and from loving the city and bringing the city forward together, all nine of us. Thank you.
Anything else?
Rafi, to sit there and put words in my mouth that I won't work together with people is absolutely absurd. I wouldn't be where I am in my life if I just sat there and only thought my way works. There's many ways to solve a problem. It's just I don't see some of the way the problems are solved in this town are the best way. But I think I can even say to you is that you talk to people. And I've talked to people. And I'm gonna go back to the rats scenario because we've worked together. There's people on my block I haven't talked to for a long time. And now that we're talking, we say hello to each other. So you work together to get things done. But ultimately, the blanket statement that nobody's gonna work together, you're gonna be on the other side or you're gonna be on this side. What I'm concerned is another rubber stamp getting in. That's the bottom line of why I don't wanna see the first ward represented by another rubber stamp.
Thank you. All right, one more and then let's move on to the last question.
Oh, I just wanna echo that like I understand where both Paul and Rafi are coming from. Um, I think the attitude Paul brings is that of the devil's advocate, but not, I don't even like the term. But no, he's someone who's really gonna be critical and constructively critical. Some of my best friends will tell me right to my face when they're, when they're, when I'm doing something, when I am doing something they think is a bad idea. And I think Paul can be that for the administration. He can in good faith tell them, what you're doing isn't a good idea. Um, but you know, obviously I've also complimented Rafi for his love and peace views. I think they both have great views and Leo's been saying really, really good stuff too in the first ward. Love and peace.
Thank you for where you get at the first, Ed. Rafi, you had one more?
We, we almost got through the whole thing without hearing the word rubber stamp. And I'm so sad that we did. But if you wanna see rubber stamp, look in the mirror, Paul. Look in the mirror because going there, going to the city council, insulting people, insulting the administration, getting them to get their shit about their act together, you stop yourself. It's not the way to do it. Who is gonna wanna work with you? Who's gonna wanna have a dialogue with you when you're over there going on, making fun, mocking the administration, mocking the mayor, mocking other, other city council people? That is not effective. You'll be sitting there just rubber stamping one side and who, who is gonna wanna dialogue with you?
Rafi, at least I show up at the meeting, can speak.
All right, well.
Well, speaking is not preferable when the things that are coming out of your mouth are what the things coming out of your mouth are. I mean, I'd rather sit it out and call one council person. I've spoken to them all. I've had great conversations with, uh, Councilwoman Jatino. I value her and, and admire her contribution to, to the city council. The same thing with Councilwoman Fisher. They're supporting you and I don't care. The moment the election is over, I'll be a hundred percent with them and talk to them. The same thing as the so-called ballot team or anybody else. Michael, for example, we, we, we've worked together on some projects already on, on, he's, he's called me for assistance and things. I've said yes. Same with Councilwoman Jatino, she called me for, I said yes. That is what I'm talking about. I'm not talking about, you know, that is effective. Criticism is not effective, dialogue is.
All right, thank you. So we got one more question and then we'll let all these candidates close it out. So the last question for the evening. The city recently spent $100 million on a resiliency park and yet the streets are still flooding. So was the expectation that that was going to have a big and immediate impact on flooding? And if not, now what? So we were at a, Paul? Yeah. So the city recently spent $100 million approximately on a resiliency park and the streets are still flooding. So was that expected to have an immediate impact on flood, flooding prevention efforts? And if not, then what is the plan?
I think we have to look at every storm is different. I don't think you can blanket, blanket say that the resiliency park's gonna solve our problems. Yes, there's 2 million gallons of water in there. While I am critical, I will tell you this. When we had the flooding earlier this week in high tide, I walked around the board. I went back at 3:00 PM, the water was gone in the first ward. So something is working. It's not gonna happen overnight. It depends on the storm. If the storm is coming down with six inches of rain in a matter of a couple hours, everybody's gonna flood, no matter what. Look at New York City. But ultimately, it's the intensity of the storms. So climate change, that's what's happening. There's only so much we can do. If the storm's coming down with 10 inches for, in an hour, we're underwater, no matter what, there's nothing we can do. But we also live near water, so the high tide and low tide have impacts too. So at the end of the day, it's not all about just building. So at the end of the day, it's not all about just building a resiliency park. There are other things we can do. We could look at gray water and new buildings. Love to talk to people about that, where we basically keep the water out of the system. Look it up. It's actually pretty interesting, and it's not that expensive. But ultimately, building a resiliency park is great.
Paul, let's wrap it up.
It's not going to help us overnight in storms of this magnitude.
Thank you.
Actually, it did. I walked out there last week, a week of rain. There actually were not puddles around the resiliency park. It was incredible. The total 2 million gallons came off the streets. The people living in the neighborhood couldn't believe it. I was talking to them about it. It made a huge impact, a huge impact. And that water didn't just affect the immediate area in the northwest of Hoboken, but the neighboring neighborhoods as well. So this investment in Northwest Resiliency Park, as I said in my opening, a neighborhood six feet under the Hudson River in 2012 is now puddle-free after a week of rain. Serious rain. Remember that rain? It was coming down every day. It was like Noah's Ark situation. And that park worked, okay? Now, is there still flooding in Hoboken? Sure. Go to the ShopRite, 9th and Madison. It's still flooding there. But there is a plan. The council's approved a $3 million bond. They started Phase 1. But right now, there's a 12-inch water main between 11th and 9th on Madison Street. It was covered on top by PSENG electrical work. The electrical work has been removed. The new pipe will be, we're bidding it out right now. Construction begins next year and will be completed in 2025. So are we done with the work on flooding? No. Have we made progress? Absolutely. Thanks.
Great. Rafi?
The day after the storm, of course, it flooded. The day of the storm, I was getting all the videos from the first ward, from 415, from 300 Newark. And then the next, the very next day, I got all the texts like, "Oh, we touched that bullet." It was like they couldn't believe it. And that is progress. I mean, having said that, there's so much more that we can do. There's like another pump that I'm insisting happens at the Housing Authority. I think we need to do something there. I also think that there's other water mitigations, like water harvesting. We can have green roofs. We can have more rain gardens. I mean, there's so much more to be done. But I think the parks are working. They're rebuilt by design. If we repair what has gone wrong and push forward, we'll go a long way to help the community and in all this, like, weather events brought on by the climate change. Thank you.
Thanks, Rafi.
So some of the stuff that we're seeing is that we built the resiliency park and some of our planning around resiliency happened at a time where climate change seems to be outpacing our ability to take care of the water. And I think what we're going to find is that we're going to have to continually evolve our thinking on this because it's only going to get worse. So, you know, we get to completely evaluate all of our options. And, you know, I think what's going to happen is we're going to see in the next few years that the draining of our flooding is going to go quicker. But it's still going to be a problem. And we're going to have to adapt because climate change is really happening.
Thank you. Councilman Russo?
So anyone who thought that the resiliency park was going to solve our flooding problem was kidding themselves. And the prior administration actually sold that bill of goods to our citizenry for a long time. The reality is that this is just one piece of that puzzle, right? Every amazing journey starts with that first step. And we took some of those first steps. It's not the only resiliency park in the city of Hoboken. There are multiple ones, and there are more planned. We are using rain roofs. We are using rain gardens. We're doing all these things. We need to continue to do other things. Permeable concrete, permeable asphalt. Change the way we look at our streetscape. Change the way we look at our sidewalks. We need to take all of that together to try to reduce the flooding in the city of Hoboken. But the city of Hoboken has been flooding for its entire existence. We have to understand that. What we need to do is mitigate that as much as possible. And I think we're taking steps to do that. I think we just need to be a little bit more proactive and a little bit more aggressive in doing that.
Thank you, Councilman. Leo?
Yes, I'm very proud of the fact that being part of these projects, these resiliency projects, and former mayor who had the vision, Mayor Dawn Zimmer, she needs to get a lot of credit for it. And also, the current administration and the mayor to obviously continue with resiliency parks. And it is working. There's no doubt it's working. You had high tide and you had heavy rainfall at the same time. That water is not, you're going to have flooding. It's guaranteed. However, what I did see is that we see it rather quickly. And that means that it's working. So I don't say anything negative about it. I think we, as a community, we did a great job. And you can see that we're going to be prepared for another hurricane, Sandy, if and when it happens. Hopefully, it doesn't. But I think it is working. And everyone on the council, like I said, previous administration, this administration has done their job to make sure that that happens. One thing that I did notice and we need to address is that, you know, the new flood mitigation, making sure that you don't-
Let's start wrapping it up.
Certain waters, that created gridlock throughout the city. So what you had is cars at a standstill. So I know it's a new technology that we have, but someone needed to be out there and figure out, like, that was the worst part of the storm, to be quite honest with you. So we were trying to keep people off the streets, and we had cars that couldn't move. And everyone was, you know, we need to just look at that. Thank you.
Thanks, Leo. Ed?
Clearly dealing with, oh, sorry. Clearly dealing with flooding is a multifaceted mitigation effort, as has been stated. And there's a lot of different things you can do to improve things. What I would love to see is some folks in the city council are really, really good at getting federal grant money. Can we please get like a really, really big federal grant to like fix up the sewers and the drainage? I live on Willow Avenue, and oh my God, I ruined so many good pairs of shoes in the floodwaters. But in all seriousness, like, look, there's obviously different things you can do, as has been stated. You could, you know, fix some of the piping issues. There's, you know, resiliency parks are one piece of the puzzle, as has been stated. I just think that, like, if we really want to drive forward on this, we need some kind of federal something grant to like really, really re-engineer this. So please, guys, those of you who are good at that, this is a note. And when I get on the council, if I get on the council, I will definitely look into that or encourage the folks who are good at doing that. Amen.
Thank you, Ed. Anything else before we close? All right, so we'll just continue the order, Ed. Ed, let's just, so we'll start with Councilman Coed, then Rafi, Liz, and we'll go around. And we will end on that note. So Councilman Coed, by all means, take the floor.
Thank you, John. Thanks for everyone coming out tonight. Thanks for everyone who's viewing us. And thanks for everyone who's up here for this spirited debate. I'm running for reelection to continue the accomplishments and the work that I've done for the people of the Fifth Ward. I've put the people of the Fifth Ward first. I've worked hard for them. If you'd like to join me Tuesday morning from 9:00 to 10:00, I'll be having my 88th Coffee with Cohen event. Ian said to me, he was sorry that his daughter Sheila couldn't come because she's usually there, and they usually start at 8:00. But this one's going to start at 9:00. At Foye Cafe, 1401 Adams. It's my 88th event. It's because I'm committed to talking and listening to the people of the Fifth Ward and serving the people of the Fifth Ward. I encourage you to join me there. If you'd like to join my distribution of my newsletter, I send it out twice a month, you can email me at hobokenphil@gmail. So the people of Fifth Ward, thank you for the honor of a lifetime to serve you. These past four years, I've enjoyed it. I've enjoyed it very much. Thank you to Stevens for hosting us here tonight. We had a great relationship with the city, between Stevens and the city, and we're happy to further it. If I have the opportunity to serve you, I will not let you down. I'll work hard and do everything I can to make our community a better place to live, work, and visit. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilman. Rafi?
Hi. I want to thank everybody for being here, so many friendly faces, so many people I've never met, but I hope to meet soon. I'm very proud of my campaign. I'm very proud of the fact that I have brought people together to support me and my candidacy. Not only did the mayor endorse me, but Cheryl Phallic, who can't stand him, endorsed me as well. They had the first conversation in four years at my launch party. I have supporters from Councilwoman Castellano. And her support, I have supporters from Councilman DeFusco. Need I say more? So all these people have come together, and that is what I intend to bring to the city council. I intend to be a person accessible to everyone. It doesn't matter if they voted. I couldn't care less if you voted for me or not. I'll be there for you. I'll be your councilperson. I will be your councilperson, Paul, if you ever need anything. You can reach out to me. I will, and my commitment also to all the city council people here, and whether they're elected or they'll find themselves elected, is I will work with each and every one of you. I will never not pick up the phone. I will never not have a dialogue about anything with you. Thanks again for being here. I am, you can rafi cordova.com or rafi for hoboken1withnumbers.com. You can find my actual real phone number there. That's one commitment. I will not disappear. You can get me no matter what. You can text me, call me, or email me through my website. Thank you.
Thank you, Rafi. Go right ahead, Liz.
Thanks, John. Thanks for hosting. Thanks, Stevens, for hosting. And thanks for coming. Because it's Friday night, it's raining, and who wants to be here on a Friday night, listen to us go on? So thanks for coming. I want to ask people to vote for me. And this is why. I am an entrusted and effective leader. I have a proven track record of responding to issues, advocating for residents, and delivering results. I'm an empathetic listener. I won't dismiss any concern, big or small. I have no political agenda. I want to do what's best for our community. I will be an independent voice on city council. I won't be a rubber stamp. And we need checks and balances on our local government. I am a neighborhood advocate. I am interested in solving my neighbors' issues and not scoring political points. I'm about building community. I am not transactional. I won't pick and choose which neighbors to help because it personally affects, benefits me. I'm going to build a community like I have for 30 years. If anyone wants to learn more about me or my platform, please feel free to look at my website, lizortacho.com, or give me a call. Thanks.
Thanks, Liz. Councilman Russo?
It's one thing to have ideas, but it's another thing to achieve results. I've achieved results. I've done that through my tenure as a councilman over the course of multiple administrations. I've delivered for the Third Ward. As our neighbors know, in the Third Ward, experience matters. By November 7th, vote 1E, Dr. Michael Russo. Dedicated, proven leader.
Thanks, Councilman. All right, Leo?
Hi. So again, thank you to Stevens for holding this great debate. I think we were all cordial up here and had a good dialogue. And also to John Heines. For me, 14-year veteran, okay? Working for the city of Hoboken. I have demonstrated a strong track record and effectively managed public works projects and human services initiatives. I've been successful throughout my career here in the city of Hoboken. And I've been a pretty strong public servant that listens to the public and is here for you during times of crisis. I kind of miss, you know, not being there for the public. It's been great, though, knocking on doors. And that's gotten me back feeling great when you knock on those doors. And one thing that they say, "We saw you. You did a lot of things for us. We remember you for COVID." So I wasn't knocking on a door trying to tell people, "This is what I am going to do." When I knocked on a door, they knew what I did. And that's very important. So that proven track record goes a long way, and experience goes a long way. And I still have time where I really want to work for the public. And that's why I, you know, I am running, so.
Thanks, Leo.
I appreciate your vote, 5E. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Pat. Ed? Ed, go for it.
Hey, what's up? This has been an absolute delight. I truly appreciate it. And I just want to reiterate that more important than anything, I want us to take away from this debate and this campaign that we're all neighbors. We should all be friends. We should all love each other. And if we, you know, I admit, there have been times in the past when I was a source of divisiveness, and I apologize for it. And if anyone here ever thinks they've done anything wrong or got offended or was inappropriate around their neighbors, they should apologize, and everyone should go along and have love and peace. And this is the Love and Peace, Reap the Benefits campaign in the Third Ward. I'm 3E on the ballot. That's E for Edward, and then reap has two Es in it, so that's kind of cool. But in all seriousness, one thing that's been great about this campaign has been the ability to just make a difference and participate,